Pream will give us time to get other people on. A notice is hereby given that the City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and the Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, will hold a committee meeting on Wednesday, February 9, 2022, 6:00 PM via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 for the purpose of taking action on the matters listed. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, when matters not requiring public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and/or bodies with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through one of the following ways. Click on the link on the city website with the password 476934. Go to the website, HTTPS Zoom US, join and enter webinar ID 84728944901, followed by the meeting password, again, which is 476934. Or by telephone, participants can dial toll-free telephone number at 8884754499 or 8778535257 toll-free to begin the meeting. When prompted, enter webinar ID 84728944901 and follow the instructions to join the meeting. City Salem, the Council, City Council on the Committee of Public Health, Safety and the Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, is meeting remotely on Wednesday, February 9, 2022, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing a review and discussion on the ordinance relative to sustainable foodware and packaging. In attendance are all of the committee members, also present from the Committee of the Whole. I see Counselor Hathworth, Counselor Watson Felt, Council President Marsillo, Counselor McCarthy. And I don't think I'm missing any of the council. Also joining us from the City of Salem is the David Greenbaum. Welcome, David. Michaela Gugliemi. I see Mr. Ravel Perrin, Ms. Carrie Murphy. At this point, I know that Counselor Varela has asked to do an introduction to this ordinance, which he is participating in the authoring. So at this point, I'll turn it over for him so that he can conduct his introduction. Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Chair Prozinski. First off, thank you to all of our attendees this evening, to all those who have weighed in concerning this proposed ordinance. We appreciate your time. It's our duty as a community to adopt reasonable change when it comes to keeping single-use foodware containers out of our solid waste stream, as these containers should and need to be diverted into either a recycling program or an existing composting program. Just so we're clear, the proposal in front of us tonight is the start of a bigger conversation concerning our resiliency as a community. We are not proposing this ordinance to punish or burden our local food establishments. As a member of our food service community, I would not have brought this proposal forward if I was not confident that the supply chain could support these changes. Before we start the dialogue, I want to address some notable concerns with this ordinance, that many containers, especially compostable containers such as cutlery, cups, will end up in the trash anyways. As that's a concern, it will likely be less of a burden to our waste stream because of the breakdown at a much quicker rate. Going forward, the goal is to develop a multi-pronged strategy to divert food waste and packaging to appropriate collections, as well as to work with regional groups, local businesses and organizations to develop small generator collection hubs on a local level. Tonight, I expect there to be some changes right off the bat, including biodegradable straws, cutlery that are not currently proposed in this draft ordinance. A direction I truly believe we should be going into as a technology concerning PLA, which is polylactic acid, which is based off of corn, are readily available and non-cost prohibitive. So I look forward to the conversation and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Varela, because this is being recorded. And just let the record show that I accidentally omitted Counselor Dominguez, who was here from the beginning. And I'm not sure, have I missed anybody else? If I did, please raise your hand. Okay. I know that our city solicitor Beth Renaud and I had spoken earlier on it, and I told her that I would let her share the screen and begin the discussion on the ordinance itself and some of the changes. So before we open it up to public comment, I think that the public should also hear what Ms. Renaud has to say. So Beth, go right ahead.
So the version that I have, Counselor, does not include what Counselor Varela added. So I'm not sure if he wants me to share my screen or if he wanted to share his screen.
I can share my screen. It'll have exactly what we have plus track changes we are proposing. Most of those are coming from Steve Kapantus, which I believe is in the audience as well. So I think it'd be appropriate, once we start talking about those, to bring Mr. Kapantus in for the conversation.
Okay, so are you going to share your screen then?
I can do that.
Okay, great.
Okay, everyone can see that? Okay. There we go. Awesome. Is that clear, Beth, for you?
Okay, so this is the first time I've seen the text in green. So basically, the first section, this was modeled after another community that has a similar ordinance. And the first section includes definitions that are referred to later on in the ordinance. So I note here that Mr. Kapantus says the biodegradable section. He's recommending that I delete this entire section for multiple reasons. And he talks about many plastics. Have modified. So I'm not sure if he explained this rationale to you, Counselor Varela.
So just to be real quick, I did talk to Barbara Warren about this, and she did agree that we should eliminate this biodegradable section only because of the microplastics. It's kind of, this section is somewhat irrelevant now, and I think there's enough options, whether it be recyclable or compostable, that we should remove this section. And I know if you want to bring Steve on, I think he can speak to more details on that as well.
I think I can do it from the shared screen if you.
You get rid of it?
I don't see him in attendance, Counselor Varela.
I don't see Steve in attendance right now.
Oh, all right. So I can embellish on that or discuss that. Let me share my screen again. Share. So when it comes to biodegradable, the concern is that a lot of these are additives to when it comes to commercial plastics. So when it goes to our waste stream, this biodegradable is, it can be problematic for not only our waste stream, but it'll end up that we'll have microplastics within everything. So, you know, that was, you know, especially with marine life, and that was one of Barbara Warren's concerns. So deleting this section will kind of force us to look at our recyclable opportunities as well as our compost. So this is why we feel this is appropriate.
Um, I'm not sure we could all see the rest of the screen. I don't know if you can put it in a, yeah, we've got to do that. So the rest of the, so you've got compostable, what that refers to. And then you're going to have to scroll up to the top of the next screen.
Yep.
So Steve Kapantus noticed, only change I made was to remove bioplastics, replace with plastics. And then he gets into a discussion about straws. Let's see. I'm not sure if there's an explanation whether straws are in or out, Counselor Varela.
So we wanted to visit that straw should be in. After talking to Steve about this, there are plenty of options for our food establishments to actually adopt a compostable straw, and they are not cost prohibitive. So that's one of the things we wanted to introduce into this and with our edits tonight. And I will submit those edits to you concerning that we should add straws as well as cutlery. And I can show you guys here. This is called PLA, and this is one of the forks here. So this looks like plastic, and this would be composted in an industrial facility. So this feels like plastic, but it's an ultimately compostable cutlery item. So options are out there.
Okay. The next section, disposable food service ware. Steve notes that consider a crime that all cutlery should be made from materials that is compostable, which you just showed us. The rest of the scroll down at definitions that are used throughout the Board of Health will refer to the Board of Health or its designated health agent. Food establishments that would be covered are those stores that prepare, package, serve, vend or otherwise provide food for human consumption. And packing material is described as foam, cushion, protective items in a container, includes without limitation packing peanuts, shipping boxes, coolers, ice chests, all other poly, how do you play, polyester foam that is not wholly encapsulated. And it goes on to describe what polyester is. And then further definitions further down on the left side, we've got a definition for what prepared food is, what recyclable means, what, who's covered by this? Retail establishments, those that sell directly to the consumer, including but not limited to grocery stores, pharmacies, liquor stores, convenience stores, retail stores, those that sell food, personal items, dry cleaning services, and there's a definition for reusable products. If you go further down, the prohibited uses basically states that food establishment shall not be able to use anything that is prohibited herein, which includes polyesterine, polyvinyl chloride, a poly, I'm manipulating and screwing up these words. But Steve is recommending that, it looks like he's recommending that be replaced with a better definition shown here. I don't know if you want to expand on that, Counselor Varela?
Yes, so when it comes to this, and I do somewhat agree with his assessment on this, bigger companies, especially Novalex, which he's a part of, they're starting to formulate out of these same materials reusable cups and plates that basically, if you've got like Tim Hortons, which, you know, operates many different institutions like Burger King, et cetera, Starbucks, the new program, which they're rolling out a pilot program right now in California, is these cups that you would obtain from Starbucks. They're putting a $1 to $2 deposit on. So what that means basically, people will be able to either bring those in, Starbucks will clean those and reuse those. But either way, because of the high value of the deposit, these cups are going to be turned into the entity that served them. Because if they're $1 to $2, you bet you that if someone finds this on the streets, there, it's an opportunity to make money and at least, so that's where the industry is, right, as of now. So when it comes to, you know, prohibiting all polystyrene, you know, that's where I think we need to look at the density, because as we all know, you know, polystyrene, as we know it, it's the, you know, expanded foam trays that we all see, that white, very light substance. So when you come to a density, that's really going to, you know, limit us from using the polystyrene or styrofoam we're used to. And where these new technologies are coming out with the density, these things are truly reusable in nature. So that's the, that would be why you're proposing this.
Okay, so it goes odd to say that food establishments, when they use this material, it's got to be compostable, reusable and recyclable service ware. And we go up to the next section, which provides certain exemptions. So this ordinance gives the Board of Health, the health agent or its designated, the ability to give someone an exemption if they have a hardship. I, I expect that this might come about if someone has bought a significant amount of a particular product that they use to serve their food in. But this ordinance, as we get further down, as you know, does not take effect until January 2023. That's what's proposed to take effect. So hopefully, if this gets adopted soon and there's enough education, there won't be any many requests for a hardship exemption. As you know, here, straws are accepted from this regulation because many people who are disabled, like myself, who have a spinal clindula, but at a higher level, need to use a straw and able to be able to drink, you know, a beverage. So that's why the ADA is listed there, because that is an ADA exception. If you go further down, the penalties for enforcement, this is, it's really written as an educational tool. So there is a requirement for written warnings, there is a grace period. And then if the establishment continues to not comply, there is a $50 first offense, $100 second offense and subsequent offenses thereafter. And there's time built in here so that people can get into compliance. And then, as you see, the effective date down below is January 1, 2023.
Excellent. I just wanted to bring up the, when it comes to penalties and enforcement of the $50 offense and the $100 for second offense, we do have some in the audience, specifically Margaret Tran and Patrick Schultz that would like to speak on that. And I think, you know, those dollar amounts might be a little too low, only because the cost between adopting something that's polystyrene and the compostable container, they may be able to get away with having a defense, subsequent offenses, where it might be cheaper for them to get offenses rather than adopt the program. So I know they wanted to talk a little bit about maybe, you know, looking at that and maybe upping the actual amount for the offenses. So I know we have a lot of people want to talk about that as well. Good night.
Is there anything else that I missed, Counselor Varela, that you wanted to point out?
I don't think so. And I think, you know, this is a good time to open it up to discussion on all of these things. And yeah, absolutely. Stop sharing.
Before I open it up to the public, I'd like it to open it up to the committee and then the Committee of the Whole, if they have any questions, you know, and then to the participants, if they have any comments or questions. I see, I think the first person to raise their hand, I hope, was Counselor Cohen. Go right ahead.
Excuse me, thank you, Chair Prozinski. The first thing, Andy and Counselor Varela and I have talked many times about this. I think it's a great thing for us to consider. One thing that I think we should do, go into the last line of the ordinance, is I think the effective date should be one year from the final passage. I think that's really important, because if this doesn't pass until, you know, spring, let's say, then the retailers and the shops only have six months to really realign their financials and their stock. I did want to mention that I got this drink at the Juicery, and both the container and the straw are compostable. So I don't really have any complaints other than, one of the things that's happened in Massachusetts and beyond is when styrofoam or polystyrene has been banned or, you know, diminished in its usage. A lot of shops like Starbucks and Honeydew, Dunkin' Donuts, even Bagel World, go to a combination paper and plastic cup. And the reason it has plastic in it is because the paper won't, you know, have enough structural, you know, stability to hold a hot drink or something with acid like orange juice in it. And those containers are not recyclable like styrofoam is. So they either get thrown in the trash or, you know, if they are put in the recycling, they are not recyclable. But the only change I would make immediately would be that the effective date should be a year from final passage.
And I agree. Does anybody oppose that? If not, we can ask our city solicitor to add that into the, into the ordinance as it's being changed. Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is very exciting. I'm really, really glad we're having this discussion. Question for clarity on possible exemptions. I know you had, it was mentioned earlier that it can be, you know, if they have just too much stock of something already, and it would be wasteful to not finish up what they have. But also, it had mentioned, when I was reading it earlier today, if, you know, if an alternative doesn't exist for a specific application, you know, when I was thinking about it, you know, a lot of, I've ordered catered food from some of our local restaurants. And would there be an alternative if like you had a pan of lasagna or something, you know, of that nature that, you know, would really, you know, have a lot of liquid and was heavy? And I just didn't know if anyone could, you know, could speak to, you know, possible alternatives for those kind of pans of food, or if that would be, you know, a possible exemption.
We may have some people that may know a little bit more about that than we do on that. That'll be speaking shortly. So we will get to everybody. Counselor Ricciardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, this is exciting to see. I know I have also had multiple conversations with Salem Sound, and I know I do the trash pickups often from my gig, I love to pick up litter, and we often see those straws and styrofoam cups floating around town. So I'm definitely excited that we're taking action on this. I do have lots of questions. I don't have the latest draft in front of, I don't have my comments related to the latest draft. So I'm going to be kind of, I guess, broad on my comments right now, first, like off the bat comments that I have. My first question is, is food establishments and outreach that we have done to that, or to the food establishments or to those establishments that would fall under the definition of food establishment? I would really like to, I guess, have some more clarity around that and what our outreach can be to them. I definitely hear that this isn't going to be a cost burden to them, but I would love to see that, to really understand it and to have better, I guess, knowledge about it, and also just to make sure that the awareness campaign is out there. Because as I read this too, it's really not just a supply chain item. It's also with the compostable materials, they're really pushing that. It's this whole other process that they need to add, you know, adding the compost in. And then we don't have a citywide service for composting, like a citywide fund it service for free, you know, that would also be an additional burden that would have to be added. I'm not going to say burden, but an additional service that the business would have to add or include if they don't have that currently. So I'm just really interested. And I guess the bottom line that this would cause for businesses and what the feedback is, it's great to hear. I know that we definitely have many businesses that are already following this. So I would love to see them as kind of the leaders to help those that are not there yet, to help us get there. But I do think that this conversation needs to be a lot broader, and we can talk about how we can help reach out and help expand that conversation, maybe take some guidelines of what we did when the plastic band, plastic bag ban ordinance started and that outreach, also with the schools. And I know that there might be some supply chain items there, so I would love to hear from the schools. And just again, what other establishments fall under that food and retail establishment category? Like I'd love to get some real examples there. And then my last question, or kind of this concept question right now at this point, is enforcement. I'd love to hear from the Board of Health of what they're thinking enforcement would be and checking in and kind of following up. And if we have anyone that is skilled in this particular area, I mean, I know I couldn't walk into a store and be like, this is a compostable straw versus a plastic straw. I have absolutely no clue. So we just want to make sure that we have that skill set or with the ability to add that skill set in our services. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not being a member of the committee, first of all, I just want to say I respect everyone involved in this, and I cannot argue against the intent. I guess from, it's the first time in my 14 years on the council, I've ever seen anything proposed when I'm seeing a strike-through version that has all the strike-throughs with a member of the public. And I have the utmost respect for Mr. Kapantus and his knowledge, but I mean, let's be 100% honest, these, these orders come through us. And so if Mr. Kapantus is making suggestions, those suggestions should come through to a counselor, and those suggestions should be in the counselor's name. It shouldn't be, I shouldn't, you know, it's a matter of semantics, but I understand Mr. Kapantus is very engaged and has a lot of opinions about it, but at the same time, his opinions should be brought to the attention of a counselor, and the counselor should bring that to the attention of the council. It shouldn't be, it should, I've never once in my entire career seen a strike-through version that references a member of the public with regards to strike-through. And that's just, that's just moving forward. We need to be understanding of that, that a lot of people are going to have opinions, and everyone's opinion is valued, but at the same time, those changes should come through the council or the counselor that's proposing the changes, and that's how they should be moved forward. I've had a conversation with a couple people over the last couple days, and I will say that this is the way we need, this is the way we should be moving forward, going forward. I'm a little leery, I'm glad to hear some of the, what Counselor Cohen proposed with regards to the timing of this. I think that our business community, especially our restaurants, have endured a lot over the last year and a half to two years, and I think they need to take, be able to take a big, deep breath before we, as the government, comes in and proposes another change to the way that they do business. So I'm glad that there is some timing involved with it. But I'd also really like to see, as Counselor Ricciardi just alluded to, some more engagement, because relative to, I had a conversation with the, Renus at the Chamber of Commerce, and, you know, I won't speak for Renus, but I will just say that he was unaware of the meeting tonight. I don't know if he's in attendance tonight. And if Renus is unaware, that means is, we really need to engage the entire chamber and be able to utilize his network to make people understand, because this is going to be a big education piece as we move forward. I mean, I don't envision us, you know, making a lot of swift changes tonight, but that's the will of the committee. But I will say that, you know, this is a big opportunity to make changes, and I'm all in favor of what I'm hearing, but I'm just, A, a little leery of the timing, and B, I want to make sure everyone understands, because the last thing I think that any of us want to do is coming out of, you know, almost two years of COVID and all the restrictions and the different things that our business, that our business community had to endure. The last thing I want to do is drop another change on them, just as they finish getting rid of, just as they finish understanding of what just transpired last night with the Board of Health meeting and then moving forward. So I think that, you know, government sometimes doesn't move as fast as we all want, but in this case, I think the change ultimately is the right thing, but I think the implementation, really, we have to be careful with, because I'll just speak for my own personal stuff. If I was right now, if I was to walk into any one of your homes and I was to go to try to do a, do your kitchen over, you know, two years ago, I could tell you it would take three to six weeks to get a kitchen cabinet. Right now, if I'm, if I'm going to order kitchen cabinets, it's taken 14 to 16 weeks. The supply chain is upside down and I don't know enough about the supply chain with regards to what we're talking about tonight, specifically to the restaurant business with regards to any of these potential change, changes. And I'm assuming these restaurateurs have the, the items in place that they need right now to move, go moving forward. But to make a change quickly, I'm a little leery about that. But I'm, and ultimately I think that in the long term, it's the right decision. But short term, it's just, I'm a little apprehensive. Let's put it that way. So I would just encourage caution moving forward. Thank you.
Council Verella?
Thank you, Chair Prozinski. Uh, for your, Counselor McCarthy. Um, I reached out to the Chamber of Commerce about a month ago about this issue. Um, so I really feel like before our conversation here tonight, uh, we did give, uh, Renus and the chamber more than enough opportunity, uh, for discussion in this. Um, and, um, I would like to add to that as well. Uh, when it comes to procurement of these, uh, materials, myself and my personal capacity, I know this is possible and this is doable. Because I am a part of this industry. This is what I do for a living. And I know that this is viable going forward. And I also know that when it comes to a food service establishment, you know, they're not sitting on eight to nine months of, of foodware. It's just not usually viable for storage space, especially when it comes to concerning polystyrene to hold that much. So, you know, I, this is completely reasonable. I, I really believe there's ample time for change on this. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen?
Uh, thank you, Chair Prozinski. Um, I do agree with Counselor Ricciardi. I think we do need to have a robust hearings. I think it would be appropriate. I, I think that, you know, I do, uh, trust a lot of what Counsel Verella says, but at the same time, uh, you know, this is going to impact our small businesses, not the big, you know, retailers that are in Salem. Uh, they, they always find a way of dealing with it and at a cost effective way that a smaller mom and pop is not going to be able to accomplish. And I think that by expanding the public hearings and having, um, you know, people representing from all different, uh, aspects, uh, whether it's the chamber or individual stores, uh, and restaurants. I think, uh, we may want to also look at.
Muted.
I think it's frozen.
We'll go to Counselor Ricciardi until, until Counselor Cohen gets his, his, uh, his thing up again. Jeff, you have a bad connection. I don't even know if you can hear me, but I'm going to let Counselor Ricciardi, uh, speak until you reboot or whatever you have to do to get it fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess I, I'll just, I'm edge of my seat of what you think, my Counselor Cohen thinks. Um, but I will, um, I guess continue to, to expand on that regarding the public hearing. And I definitely, what I'm hearing is we're all very interested and excited for this ordinance, but, but, um, we want to hear from, from multiple aspects.
That, that we have a lot of work to do.
Sorry, Counselor Cohen, you froze, so I, I took over. I'll, I'm in it. My part will be quick. I'll be short. Um, so I, again, you know, absolutely no, no flight or disrespect to Counselor Verella and the industry. You know, I definitely know that you know your stuff, but as, um, Counselor Cohen mentioned and Counselor McCarthy mentioned, there are hundreds of, uh, establishments in the city that all have different books and different businesses and different bottom lines and different services that they, they sling out. And I would love to hear their feedback on this. Um, and, and see, see, you know, what the impact is. Cause that's really, it's going to have an impact. Um, and I want to make sure that, as, again, as Counselor McCarthy alluded to, we, we don't want to really have negative impacts during this time. We want to support our businesses as much as we can. But also on the flip, flip side, you know, we, we want to see an ordinance like this go through. It's definitely the right time. But we need to be, I think, very methodical and careful about how, how and when it is implemented and the pieces that are included. And in order to do that, it needs to be a robust public process, which I, I'm confident that we will do well, um, and, and get, uh, voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ricciardi. Counselor Cohen, we'll get back to you now so that you can, uh, continue. I'm not sure exactly where you, where you froze. Uh, probably about three minutes.
Well, I think my internet connection is unstable, so I'll go as quick as I can. I think, uh, I agree with Counselor Ricciardi. We need to have a really thorough.
Okay. Jeff, you're freezing again. You're freezing again.
Robust.
Okay. Um, anybody else from the committee or from the council on the whole have any questions or comments? Okay. I will open it up to our, uh, other panelists. And we have, is there anybody else on the panel? I did see, um, Carrie Murphy earlier did raise her hand.
She had to, she had the previous commitment at 6:30, so she had to jump off council. I'm sure she'll, uh, let people know what her comments were at that, you know, at a later date.
So if nobody has any comments, I think we can hear from, um, our, our attendees. And, um, I think I'm going to let, um, Mr. Capandus, uh, speak because, uh, he wasn't in earlier, but I think he'll, he'll fill us in on his, uh, his qualifications to, uh, address this issue tonight. We all know him from other previous engagements on city council business. But in this particular case, I think we're going to find out that he has a particular expertise in this area. So Steve, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Thank you, Chairman Prozinski. Steve Capandus, 23, Wisteria Street, Salem. As far as my background goes, I've, I've been in plastics for the last 25 years. Hold my undergraduate degree and graduate degree from, uh, U Lowell and UMass Lowell in plastics. Currently work for a food packaging, food service, uh, company called Novalex with 62 plants in the US. Uh, to put it in perspective, you know, we process about 1.7 billion pounds of plastics a year. So a few comments tonight, uh, through the chairman that I'd like to make is, uh, one, Counselor McCarthy is a hundred percent correct. Supply chain is an issue even in this field. We, as a company, at 1.7 billion pounds are sold out for the year. So if you came to us tomorrow and said, we want one of your sustainable products or we want a different product, you're not going to get it in a short period of time. So, um, supply and issues, supply issues are an issue in the industry. Second, I loved hearing the word compostable. That should be our target. Obviously the holy grail is what we would call home compostable. Terms like biodegradable aren't where we want to be. That's a much lower standard. Uh, there's a lot of products out there that contain additives that will break the plastic down uh, into smaller pieces that allow them to pass certain standards. Uh, but all you're creating is smaller pieces of plastics into the environment. So, um, we really want to set ourselves at that compostable goal. Industrial compostability is the level of what we have in the United States today. And we're all working at home compostable. Other things, I, I, I heard a little bit about coffee cups from Counselor Cohen. Um, just to give you an idea of coffee cups in the United States, 160 billion a year of coffee cups. Of that, about half of them, 50% are the double wall coated paper. So 80 billion that never get recycled. When we talk about products like that, we want to be into reusable products. Something that you can get 25 to 50 reuses. I'm currently working on reusable coffee cups with Starbucks, with Tim Hortons. And Tim Hortons includes Burger King, Taco Bell. And they're a much, they're a very large company. What would be better than reusable is if you use a product that is both either reusable, recyclable or reusable and compostable. Cause now you're achieving both of those goals, just in reuse and thrown away. I, I think the other opportunity, when I met with Counselor Verella, uh, when I first saw this, we met at Crosby's. And this is me, me at Crosby's. We'll go for a walk inside Crosby's. Only the prepared foods, because the ordinance was written at prepared foods. And I wanted to show him that, you know, if you eliminate PET, what type of, polyethylene terephthalate, if you're wondering, what type of effect that would have on a local grocer? And we were talking about over 90% of all prepared foods would have to change their packaging. And that's just a, a massive undertaking. And when it comes to PET, PET is the number one recycled plastic in the United States. That is where we're getting most of our PCR from. So when we make plastic products that contain 25 up to a hundred percent PCR, we value that recycled chain. And most of our customers in the company I work for, we have goals for 2025. And we're all working on reducing plastics. How do we reuse plastics? And the biggest gap in this is, is the void in the circular economy where after the end user is done with the plastic, how do we, as the company that produced it, or how does the resin manufacturer get that plastic back? So that it can be chemically recycled back to polymer again. So those are my comments. If you have any questions for me, I'm willing to, uh, answer any questions about the ordinance or about the plastic that's, uh, that's in this ordinance.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions or comments at this point? Okay. Anybody from the audience? I'm looking at our attendees to see if anyone has any questions or comments. So this is the beginning of something that's going to take us a little while to, uh, to construct in Word and get off the ground properly. Obviously there are some obstacles and, and responsibilities that have to fall on, um, on the definitions and how we're going to, uh, how this is going to affect, um, affect, uh, businesses and schools, the city and the, um, proprietors out there that use a, a lot of this, especially the grocers. I was, I was pretty shocked when I heard Steve say that 90% of the things inside the Crosby's are, don't quite meet the, uh, the needs, but that's something we can, uh, deal with later. Steve, do you still have your hand raised or is that, uh, is that taken down?
Mr. Chair, it looks like, um, another member of the audience has raised their hand.
Patrick Schultz, I'm going to allow you to talk right ahead, Patrick. Thank you. Lost your connection with us. Patrick, if you want to go back and try it again. Yeah. Does the board of health, David, have any, uh, have any thoughts on, on this? I know that, uh, the city does some of its purchasing for the schools and the council on aging and everything with some of the materials. But, uh, I'm curious as to where the, um, where the board of health stands, uh, with this issue.
I don't have many comments at this point, Counselor. I think that the board would be supportive. And, you know, we look forward to seeing a, a final draft of the, of the ordinance so that we could review it and may comment at that point.
Okay. So that's what, uh, that's what we've been tasked with. That's like, I think we're going to, you're going to be making some changes and, um, I guess.
Yes. Um, so as I said, I just saw the, uh, comments tonight, um, the counsel Verella presented to us. And so I can work with him to incorporate those and, um, come back to this, to this committee, with a final version or not a final version, but a, a version that's cleaned up, uh, for your consideration.
I'm not sure whether, uh, Mr. Schultz went out and came back in. I think I saw his, his hand blink. So, uh, Patrick, can you speak with us or did we still lose you? We're not, we're not getting you. So maybe hopefully at the next meeting, uh, when we take this up again, uh, you can, you can join us a different way. I also see Salem Sound, which I'm guessing is Barbara Warren has her hand up. So, um, Barbara, is that you, uh, allow you to talk right ahead?
Hi, everybody. Um, not Barbara. Sorry to disappoint. This is, um, Margaret Tran. I'm at 65 Appleton Street. Um, I'm going to say a couple of things, uh, from organization standpoint for Salem Town Coast Watch. And also I'm going to try and summarize what I think Pat may have wanted to say. Um, he did warn me that his, his microphone is not great. And I think that we are, we can, can attest to that. So, so Pat, um, as many of you may know, owns a, has a long history in the restaurant industry here in Salem. Right now he co-owns, um, All Souls Lounge with my wife Jen Tran. They have gone fully compostable with all of the disposable, um, ware packaging in their restaurant. So on the one hand, they are, I, I think doing all that they can and are, are an example, are, are a great example of how possible it is to, to use and to, um, to get all of these materials that we will be suggesting to other restaurants. So, um, I think Pat would say that cost is not and should not be an issue. Um, though we are, we are kind of the choir in that argument and that we make the, make the commitment to the environment and see the value in, in making those decisions. And so it's, I think, uh, challenging, it's challenging to have those conversations with people with different priorities in their business models and business budgets. So it is something that we have to keep in mind. However, um, we can show that it, it can be done. Um, we personally have not had an issue with supply yet. Um, as Andy mentioned, we're not keeping eight months of supply in the back hallway. Um, we're getting it as we need it and so far, so good. We are a new restaurant, so that may change, but we will, we're more than welcome or more than willing to, to share our experience so far. So, so there's that. Um, Andy mentioned earlier that I had also wanted to make a comment about the fines um, associated with the, the ordinance as it stands right now. I think that they, they should be revised, but for, for a couple of reasons. Um, one being if we are claiming that buying these better materials are, if we're claiming that it is more expensive to do that, I think that we need to make sure that these fines that could be incurred by an establishment not following this ordinance, um, are not less than what they would be spending on these better materials. It seems to me that with the right timing, they could just opt to pay the, uh, pay the fine every year or every month or whatever the schedule could be, um, instead of changing their business model and changing their, their, their budget to, to accommodate these more environmentally friendly, um, materials, which is what we want them to do, right? And then the other little morsel that I wanted to share and that some of you are, have heard of is that Salem Town Coast Watch has a team of high school interns who are working on restaurant support. Um, they are trying to promote sustainability in the food industry here in Salem and in Lynn. These are very challenging conversations to have, um, for all of the reasons we're already talking about. But know that, that once we get those ducks in a row and maybe once this ordinance is passed, the support and the team willing to have these conversations does exist and we hope that it is a growing team. So we want, as an organization and as a member of the food industry, we want this to be a, a possible change and we want to be as supportive and find the resources. This to be a, a possible change and we want to be as supportive and find the resources For these establishments trying, trying to make this change. Um, I, I agree that it's not going to happen overnight and it's not going to happen before January first, twenty twenty-three. Um, but I think that we have a lot of bright minds in, in this Zoom room alone that can Can help make this transition for a lot of people. I think that's all I had for, for now, but, um, can definitely answer any questions About our involvement and anything else if there are any.
Thank you, thank you, Margaret. Uh, David, go, go, go ahead.
Thank you, counselor. Um, just one quick point and then I'm going to have to jump off. Um, the state has a program called recycling works and I'm pretty sure that they do have, um, information on this very topic Uh, out there for businesses, restaurants in particular, um, as they try to reduce the amount of trash that's going into the waste stream. So, um, we could certainly engage with them and see if they could provide some educational materials for businesses. Um, or even come out and do some educational, uh, informational Type visits with businesses to talk about this and, and work with them to hopefully Get where the council would like to see this go. So, uh, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to jump off. I have another commitment. So, uh, I hope everybody has a good night. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Kapatis, did you raise your hand again?
I did, Counsel, uh, Chairman. Sorry about that. I, I do have a couple of comments about availability of alternative materials. Uh, when it comes to things like cups, straws, uh, moving away from, uh, Polystyrene foam, um, there are readily available products out there today. Um, from a standpoint of cost, we're talking about Pennies on the, pennies on what you're paying today, right? You may see a ten to thirty cent Increase on that package change. And they're all available as a compostable product. Uh, both in silverware, the cups, the straws, many of what, uh, you would consider the to-go containers. And then there's other viable options. People seem to like Uh, polypropylene more than they do polystyrene. So most of your to-go containers today Are from polypropylene that contain a, a high percentage of post-consumer recycled Material. So most of it is readily available. Some of the other things, when you go into the grocery stores, when you go into like the Baker's Isles and those types of clear clamshell containers, which are made from PET. Um, the transition from that to a alternative product, It would be a little more difficult than what our typical, uh, to-go containers or restaurants are using for containers.
Kayla, I know that you're like the trash and recycling coordinator in Salem. Do you have any, any thoughts that you may want to, uh, Now that you're kind of digesting all this stuff and, and coming from, from your spot, do you have any, any thoughts on this?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think this is great and I would love to see this happen. Um, I can just talk from my experience. Part of my job is doing recycling bin inspections in the morning And you definitely see a lot of styrofoam in there contaminating recycling. So if there's no more styrofoam in Salem, I think that would be great. It would help Reduce recycling contamination. Um, but yeah, I, I think it's great. I'm looking forward to seeing, um, the next draft of the ordinance and, um, Looking forward to this whole thing coming together.
Other panelists, so, uh, Mr. Perrin, have you got any thoughts on your end?
Hi, hey, everybody. Uh, yes, I really support, uh, this, um, Um, What, what we are trying to do here. Uh, but I, I, however, I do have a concern about the supply chain. Um, because I am really suffering that, uh, piece of it, that part of it, uh, in the food, uh, in the schools. Um, it has been really hard to procure any, um, Paper supplies to, um, feed the students. So, um, I know in this panel, a few people had mentioned that, um, they, that it did not affect them. So, um, currently I have, uh, Had to do, uh, two emergency procurement in order to, uh, buy supply for, to feed the students. And I just, um, probably going to have a, to do a third one Um, very soon with a different vendor, uh, just to procure, um, Plates and forks to, um, feed the students. So it is a big concern. Um, I'm hoping by next year, we will not be talking about supply chain Uh, issues, but currently, um, it is, uh, hard for this goal.
I was, I was told that the Salem schools, um, already have adopted, adopted, um, quite a lot of this, um, Uh, what this ordinance is, is trying to strengthen. Um, so Hopefully, uh, purchasing can, can help you, uh, find suppliers that meet, meet what you need. Yeah, um, Counselor Varela, have your hand up again.
Thank you, Chair Prozinski. Um, uh, two things. Uh, did I mention that if we do adopt this, I know it's not going to happen tonight. There needs to be a robust, um, robust conversation, which I completely agree with. We would be either the forty-ninth or fiftieth community in the Commonwealth to adopt this. So this isn't a new idea. This is something that has been adopted elsewhere in our state. Uh, it's completely reasonable and I don't think there has been a detriment when it comes to community adopting this for their food service establishments. On, uh, concerning supply chain locally, I mean, even, uh, you know, within the state, I've talked to multiple, uh, distributors, Arrow Paper, Berlin Packaging, Cisco, uh, as well. And concerning supply chain of these compostable products and even some of the polypropylene Uh, products, the recyclable products, they are becoming, the, the, the supply chain is becoming more sound. And a year from now, it will be a different, uh, situation. But I have verified these with many sources that supply chain is not as bad as it once was six months ago. This is real data, just to let you guys know. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're tasked with the responsibility of Cleaning up the, uh, the ordinance and adding in a few things and doing a little bit of digging around to see the impact On all the different entities that will be impacted by this. So, uh, we'll be having another meeting on this probably Um, next month. Does, um, anybody want to, uh, make a motion? Um, to keep this in committee for further discussion? Counselor Ricardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that, uh, the matter stays in committee.
Second.
Oh, all voting on that? Counsel, Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Berkle?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself, a yes. Thank you. Do I have another motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, everybody, we, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for the beginning of this and, uh, we will be in touch with everybody Soon on it. Thanks again. Have a great night. Bye-bye now.